So I am to say, due to precautions associated with the COVID pandemic, all MHA offices have limited open hours to the public. This meeting will be held via the video conference with board members, staff, and presenters participating remotely. Agenda items have also been reduced as to simplify the meeting. Erin, has anybody?
We haven't received any public comments, so actually, we can just move into the roll call.
Okay. I didn't realize we did roll call, but okay, let's do roll call. Mandy, I presume you're doing that?
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson Galluson?
I am here.
Vice Chair Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Morris?
I'm here, and I'm not muted. Frantically trying to get off mute. I wasn't on it. Okay, thanks.
That's fine.
Commissioner Sheik?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Present.
And Commissioner Clausen?
Present.
And, as I said off mic, Brad Clausen is our newest commissioner, and we're very happy to have him with us this evening. If you don't know Brad, find a way to get to know him because he's going to be a real super asset to this. Erin says that we have, we had made it possible for anyone who would like to make a public comment during an open forum, that they had to send that in writing prior to the meeting, I think yesterday. And Erin tells us that there's no, there are no public comments, so we will proceed to election of officers. And we will have nominations from the floor for Chair and Vice Chair. Somebody? Yes, I'm happy to serve, but you have to nominate me.
I nominate Jan Galluson for Chair. And can I go ahead and make a nomination for Vice Chair in the same?
Sure, let's do that.
And Libby Olson for Vice Chair.
Are there any other nominations from the floor?
Hey, guys, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but we need to separate these out.
I was gonna say, I can't second that one, because in that case, I will revise that to only nominate Jan Galluson for Chair.
Okay. And Libby had seconded that, so.
I'll second that.
So, do you have to pull the board, Mandy?
I believe you have to say that you're ceasing nominations from the floor now.
I am ceasing nominations from the floor.
And then I will call the roll.
Okay.
Chairperson Galluson?
Sure.
Vice Chair Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheik?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
And Commissioner Clausen?
Brad?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, now nominations from the floor for Vice Chair.
I would like to just say, if anybody wants a nomination, I will happily give it to them.
I'm not allowed to nominate you, but I would like you to be nominated. Somebody want to do that?
I nominate Libby Olson for Vice Chair.
And somebody needs to second it?
I second.
Are there any other nominations from the floor? We cease nominations. Mandy, poll the board.
Chairperson Galluson?
Absolutely.
Vice Chair Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheik?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
And Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Great, okay, we've got that out of the way. I had to force Erin to put that on the agenda. That's why you got to adjust the agenda this afternoon. I would like a motion to I have to, there we go. I oh, there we go. And I would like a motion to accept the minutes from the March 17th regular meeting.
Before you do that, Jan, could I just ask a question here? The minutes I got are dated February 17th. Did I get a two-month-old set, or is the date just wrong on those?
Mandy, can you answer that question?
Scroll back to the top of the minutes and
He's absolutely right, it does say February. But it's, it read to me like the March meeting.
Yes, you're correct, it's the March meeting.
Okay, so that, it is just an improper date on the document that we received. Thank you, Brad, for pointing that out. I still would like a motion to accept these, and then we can discuss them.
I'm going to accept the minutes with the revision from February 17th to March 17th.
In a second, please?
Second.
Libby, seconds. Are there any questions, corrections, additions? Anything anybody would like to say about those minutes? Hearing no discussion about the minutes, I call the question.
Chairperson Galluson?
Yes, accept.
Vice Chair Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheik?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Okay. Next item under briefings and reports. The first item is the financial report. It's January, February, and was it three, is it January, February, and March, Mandy? It's okay. And Mandy, will you please go ahead and explain anything that you need, I think needs explained? And then anybody who has questions can ask questions.
And just, there's some highlights on this copy that I have on the screen that we'll kind of go to to help you see, so we're all looking at the same thing.
Okay, great.
Mandy will talk through those things, but if you have other questions along the way, feel free to jump in.
Okay. Mandy, go for it.
All right, so our first highlight is there on the low rent public housing report is for January of 2021. In January, so far, our fiscal year-to-date net profit, the loss, was the loss of $4,370.43. Operating reserve balance as of January 2021 was setting at $100,367.74. And then we get down to page three, and this is our statement of net position. And I just highlighted the accounts receivables there, so you guys can see them. And going on through February, March, you'll see the accounts receivable for the voucher program, it'll be zero in March. Due to staffing out in January and February and just a busy schedule going on through those months, I was not able to transfer that money on the last day of the month, like I usually do. It occurred by the 10th of the month per the policy that you guys approved, I believe, in December. But as you can see, that accounts receivable business activity tax credit is in regards to the non-public housing units at Flint Hills. So you can see at the beginning of the year, it was $73,000, almost $74,000 that they owed, and that has increased to $84,175. The major increase in that for January is when I charge management fees, and I charge that on the 1st of January, and it's a flat amount for the whole year. So that receivable really jumps up in January. Erin, if you want to go ahead and go down?
Can you, real quick, the CARES Act receivables, are those, when do we anticipate getting those funding?
I pulled all of that money this last week.
Okay.
So there won't be, there should not be a receivable in April. There may still be one on the financials, because it's not set to hit the bank until May 1st.
So our deficit as of month-end would have been positive had we had access to these funds? Is that accurate?
Access to those funds, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the first highlighted here for the variance, of course, in January, it's so hard to talk about variances, because it's the first part of the year. But you'll see when we do budget revisions that this line item will change. I don't believe we changed it on this budget revision, because it's so close, but when we do our final budget revision for the year, we'll change that. But right now, our management fee is setting at 102% of what we budgeted, so $13,816.9 is what we received from the non-public housing units and the public housing units at Flint Hills Place. Now, the non-public housing units have not paid that portion. But when we book the management fees, we book it as income onto the report, so it shows us the full amount, but then on the other side, there is a receivable for that as well.
Okay.
We'll go down here to liability insurance. We're already at 40%, which is pretty accurate, except for, I believe she has coded some of what what I would code into property insurance into liability, so she's a little high there, and she'll have those adjustments for you guys in April. Workers' comp is at 80%, and you'll see on our budget that we decreased that line item down. We had our audit for 2020, and we had a low loss risk ratio, so that decreased the amount of premium that we paid for our workers' comp. And that policy runs from February of, February 15th of 2021 through February 14th of 2022. So it doesn't really coincide with our financials. And then, we highlighted this down here, just so you guys could kind of see prior year what our net position was. We were, in January, we were at $28,000 in the hole, and January of this year, we are only $43.70 in the hole.
Can you remind us, are there usually expenditures that take place in January that are budgeted throughout the year but are higher in January? For some reason?
Yeah, usually that's, that's workers' comp. I try to pay that in January, and I pay for the whole year. We started paying our property insurance quarterly, because we couldn't make the payments in '16, '17, and '18, at the beginning of the year. So the insurance payments here in January are quarterly payments, so every four months, we'll make that payment. But really, workers' comp is probably the only one that I pay directly out in January for the whole year.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. All right, vouchers from January. Year-to-date net profit in Section 8 is $5,147.07. Our operating reserves in January of 2021 was $20,063.72, which is much better than we were last year.
Okay, I have a question about that slide that you just went by. Why does it, why does it only have January information on it?
Because this is, this is the January financial report, so it's only
Oh, okay. Okay, good, I'm good. There were so many pages here, I got a little confused.
We highlighted this one, just to show you again that the operating reserve is at $20,000. I wanted to show you the payable on the Section 8 side to low rent, which is $69.03, which is the same receivable on the public housing side. A net position, or total liability net position for Section 8 is setting at $84,922. And then on this one, we wanted to show the increase, and I can kind of explain that increase. So, for the admin expenses, we received about $9,000, and we only spent $41.75 of it, so 5100 of it is actually profit for the month. And if you go down to the Section 8 voucher half activity, it'll show that we almost spent all of our half fund, which is, which is amazing, and you'll see in the other reports that we were like $11 away from spending all of our half money just in half. But we did have about $1,700 left from January. And you'll see and hear us say later on that we're, we're working on getting some vouchers out on the streets to assist more individuals. But we wanted to show this, because our net profit from last year in January was only $839, and this year, we were at $69.30. So, pretty good increase there. All right, February. So, public housing. February looked really good, and February looked really good, because I drew down some money from capital fund. And when I drew that down, it hit the bank before the check was actually cashed. So you'll see in March where our reserves kind of dipped back down to normal kind of reserve level. But when I wrote the check and I drew the funds down, of course, the funds came in before the check went out. And I, and I do that just to make sure that there's money in the bank to cover those huge expenses, so fiscal year-to-date profit so far as of February is $87,671. The reserve went up to $192,409. And then I wanted to show these receivables again. So, you're, until April, books are done, and you guys see April books, you're going to have those receivables from the CARES Act. And those receivables are from payroll purposes. So, I tried to draw them at the end of the month, but it takes three to four days for it to process in the bank, so it may be payroll is on the 28th of the month, and I can't draw it down until the next month after that expense is done. But again, you'll see accounts receivable for the business activity side, tax credit went up to $86,866. And again, that's the management fees booked, that salaries and benefits for maintenance, that salaries and benefits for the housing manager position. And then you'll see the receivable from the voucher, the $43.45.78. And like I said, I usually try to get that pulled at the end of the month, but due to things that were going on in the office, I just could not get that done by the end of the month. But you'll see in the March report, it is a zero balance. I highlighted management fees again, just because the variance is over 100%, but we will do that with a budget revision to change that. Maintenance materials, we're at 16%. In February, that's a little high. But we did start pushing unit turnover, so in order to fix the units, you've got to buy the material to fix the units, so more than likely, we'll probably have a budget revision closer to July for this category. I don't want to do a budget revision too early on that category, because we could be changing that every single month, just depending on what we need to have done in units.
Oh, maybe
Yes.
Maybe it's a good time to remind Brad why we're, we are so paying such close attention to the budget revision.
Okay. So, when we received some letters from HUD in regards to our troubled status, one of the things they discussed was that they didn't feel like the board was looking at financials in depth enough, because there wasn't any discussion on the, on the meeting minutes. And there was no discussion, because in prior months, I would do a full report on the financials, and that would be slapped on the front of the financials for the board to review. So there wasn't much discussion, because I already had put that information in there. So now, you don't see a full report from me, you just see the actual financials. And I'll go through them every single month and talk about the variances and ask any questions. We were told to do budget revisions every time there was a variance. I'm working with HUD on getting clarification if that revision needs to be done for each specific account code? Or can it just be for the actual, like, total general expenses? So I'm working with HUD on getting that answer in writing.
Thank you, that was helpful information. And, you know, for a month or two, it probably, I may not have a lot of questions until I can really get a grasp on this, and then I may have more than you want.
Well, I think it might be a good idea for you, Brad, to maybe spend some time with Mandy going over this whole, the setup of this report, so that it makes more sense to you.
That, that's a good thought.
And I'm sure she'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Right, Mandy?
It may take more than one or two months, but
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's very complicated, and HUD made it much more complicated for us when he insulted us, when they insulted us. So this, a lot of this is because we were not happy with what they said, because it wasn't true. Okay, go.
Right, so the next highlighted area, which shows 341%, is building upgrades. When she coded some of our TCA bills for the heating and, well, for the heating repairs that we had, she codes those to building upgrades, because it was actually replacing a whole unit. So, we will do a budget revision again to adjust this. But this was not on the budget revision, because I have it coded to another category. So but I will be discussing with her on that.
Who, who is she and her?
She is Carly, she's our, our fee accountant that we have.
Gotcha, thank you, okay. I just, I didn't know it was HUD or internal, it's a fee accountant, okay, good.
I, I think, also, this is a good opportunity. So, we will get you the information, but we also get the information from our fee accountant. So it's kind of like we're, we're saying she, but it's really, you're, you're needing that information from us. Currently, that's the fee accountant. Also, I think we'll do a little bit better trying to talk about some of the acronyms and spell them out, like, what, what half means and things like that. Not just for Brad's sake, but for all of our sakes. Because it, and anyone else paying attention. So if you can, Mandy's so in the zone that she doesn't realize, some of the acronyms are, are maybe foreign to other people.
Very true. Acronyms are common knowledge here. All right, so we highlighted at the end here, our increase in our net position, and we just kind of wanted to show you where we were the prior year. We were only setting at $12,437 to the good. And current, to your current year, we're setting at $87,671. So we're increasing our net position by over $75,000 over last February.
That sounds great.
I just highlighted this little area right here, just to show that I did pull down some capital fund money, but when I pulled it down, it didn't hit the bank till later, so she, she codes it in here, and then once she gets the money in, you'll see that zero in the March report. All right, housing choice vouchers. Fiscal year-to-date net profit is $10,222.90. Our operating reserve balance as of February 2021 is $25,139.55.
Because this is the February report, now I understand.
And I just wanted to point out that accounts payable, which matches the accounts receivable on the public housing side. All right, so this month, we increased our net position by $3,953.35. We had a total of, or we had a total of $4,533.95 in admin expenses. And you'll see this month, we overspent in our half, but if remember, in January, we underspent. So, when you add those two together, we actually still underspent a little bit. I think it was by $11 or something like that. So, we're doing really good on making sure that we are keeping our Section 8 half money utilization up, for sure. That's something that we monitor almost on a weekly basis. I just wanted to highlight there, the prior year. Hey, Erin, can you go up just a little bit? A little bit more. All right, now you can go back down my desk. So, prior year-to-date, last year, we were setting at $11,513. This year, we're setting at $10,833 so far, so a decrease of $6.29 in our net position, but we're still positive for the year. All right, low rent, public housing for March of 2021. Our fiscal year-to-date profit so far is $20,432.08. Our operating reserve for March is $130,170.25.
That $25,000 was not what you said, Mandy, you said 20,000.
Oh, $25,432.08.
Okay, then I misheard, thank you. Blanked it out.
All right, just wanted to show those receivables again. Jamie, if you'll note, the FHI CARES Act is down to zero, so all those funds came in. But we saw that receivable for the CARES Act side of it. And then the March receivable for the voucher is at a zero. The receivable for the business activity side of the, well, the tax credit units, the non-public housing units out of FHI has grown to $91,594. So almost, almost $17,000 more than at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Sorry, we have a someone knocking on the door, and I heard it. They're on the front desk. All right, he's coming right back.
So you can't scroll it, is he doing it?
I don't think I can scroll it. All right, he's coming.
I'm back, sorry.
It's okay.
We had a guest.
Here we go.
So on this page, our other tenant revenue, which consists of work orders, late fees, retroactive rent, anything that is not rent-related is coded to this category. So we're setting at 59% already in March. So we will do another budget revision to adjust this amount as well. I will not complete a budget revision on this category till around June or July as well, just because that can, with tenant maintenance work orders, that number can be lower, it could be higher, it could jump way up one month, so on and so forth. So I'll wait till around July air. So I'll wait till around July area to do that budget revision unless HUD instructions, instructions are any different. Cell tower revenue and we'll talk about that later. It's at 35%. So we've collected 11,891, which is a pretty good amount of money for MHA.
Andy, it's Linda Morris. I thought that HUD wanted more frequent budget revisions. I, I mean, in the past, we only, you only did them like twice a year or something. And they were, they were critical of that. So, I mean, I envisioned you having to do them every month just to satisfy them. But you're not going to do that. You're going to wait like group, like quarterly or what are, what are you planning?
But what we're trying to do, Linda, is we, we are, we are doing them every month. So you have one on the agenda here for this one. But there's almost, the way that we're doing them right now is if there's any variance triggered at all, we do one, right? And so that means we'll do 12 at least. And no matter what, there's going to be a variance. What we're, what we're talking about potentially is with HUD Regional Office. It may be rather than doing one based on every percentage of a movement and variance, rather we, they give us guidance that we should do one, like for this section you're looking at right here, if that total other operating receipts is a, if there's a 5% variance in that whole category, maybe we do one then. Like some, some mechanisms that trigger it, that isn't just everything. Because right now, you're going to have a revision every month. And which at, at a certain point, that just becomes accounting and not budgeting.
Yeah. So my question is, are you getting it in writing from HUD, what we're going to have to do?
We have, we're waiting on that.
Play HUD games?
Until, until we have it in writing, you will see these revisions. And that's why I kind of mentioned earlier, wanted Brad to know why we are doing this. Because it kind of seems though, maybe a little bit super in the weeds. But we're just, this is about as close as we can get to examining the budget. And so as a new commissioner, you're going to get a really close view. But maybe we'll get pulled out a little bit and maybe be able to do it in brackets if there's some guidance. Until then, like you said, Linda, we're going to do it very often.
Agreed.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Admin salaries set at 35%. So you'll see the budget revision for that later in the agenda. Legal expense setting at 68% already in March. You'll see a budget revision for that on the agenda. Advertising and marketing, we're only at 6%. But I do know we've done some more advertising in the last couple of months. So I will probably leave that one alone for a while until we see how we're going with it. Membership dues, we were at 96%. We, we should have all of our memberships saved for Narro, Kansas Narro, Southwest Narro, and any other memberships that we have out there. So I don't foresee a budget revision on this one unless there's one that comes in that we decide as a whole with MHA that we need to be a member of, and we will adjust that budget line item.
And we, we added the West Loop Business Association as a due on there too. And they, that will also tie into our marketing. I'll talk about that later.
The next highlight there is gas. We're setting at 25%, which is a little higher than normal for March. And we did have a couple of big bills when the, when our negative 20 degree weather came through. So I'm going to kind of leave that one alone to kind of see if it levels out here before we do a budget revision. Since this is only through March. Liability insurance at 204%. You'll see a change in April books for that. As she, as the fee accountant had coded, some of the expenses and one of the other categories of insurance that where I had coded in. Extraordinary maintenance of 10,194. This was a new expense to the housing authority. It was for some mold remediation at Carlson Plaza. We did pull down our second increment of shortfall money from HUD to pay for this. So you'll see on the budget revision where I've increased the income from the shortfall that we received. And then we also increased the expense side of it. And that building upgrades, like I said in the prior month, you'll see an adjustment in April on the book.
How many units needed remediation?
One unit needed complete mold remediation and the second unit, I believe they just came in and cleaned it really well. It did not need as much mold remediation as the first unit did.
So there wasn't anything in the basement or any other of the utility areas?
Do what, Lynn?
I said there were, there wasn't any mold in the basement or the utility areas?
I'm sorry. I thought I was on mute. The, the there is quite a bit more that we need to discuss amongst Carlson and other facilities. But this is, this 10,000 only reflects one service of mold remediation from American? Is that who, or is it one of our contractor that came and did it? And it was an extreme case where they had to come in and, and actively, we've moved the person out of that unit and they, they actively remediated it then. That's a little different than like preventive or routine care of the building, which I think you're kind of talking about with the basement and stuff. This was a kind of an active thing. We can talk more about that in just a minute though. I, I think that, that's a longer conversation.
Well, as long as, I just wanted to talk about it and I didn't see a place. Okay. Well, we can talk later. That's good.
Hey Linda, I, I, I will note that we took that unit offline with HUD. We're just waiting on approval for it.
So, so it's been remediated and, and, and you don't pull it back into service? You take it off, out of service as far as HUD is concerned?
Right. Yes.
And nobody lives there. Okay.
Right. Yep. Yep. We took it out of service. Well, we, we requested to have it taken out of service the, the day of the remediation work. Is the day requested for it to be taken out of service.
Okay. Thanks. And they, and the tenant was relocated elsewhere in the building or some, somewhere else or?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, would you scroll back up there just a quick second? The, would you explain one more time, the building upgrades? What does that entail?
Building upgrades would be if one of our heating units went down in an apartment and TCA had to come in and replace the whole unit. Our fee accountant sees that as a building upgrade and she will put it on our assets at the, at the end of the year, where when I put, when I submit the check and submit the reports to her, I code them to the TCA line of heating and cooling contract, where she moves it to building upgrades so that she can then adjust the depreciation schedule for the housing authority.
And so this $5,000, that's what that was, was HVAC upgrades?
Yes.
Okay.
Does the fee accountant speak the same language as HUD? With regard to interpreting what an item is?
Yes. Yes, they do. They do. All right. So I wanted to highlight rental income because we are about 4,000 more than what we were last year. So last year, we were at 120, or I'm sorry, last year we were at 117,664.27. This year we're at 122,153.50, which is great, which means we've leased up some more units. Utility, I don't know why we highlighted that one. I'll skip down to maintenance. So prior year, we were at 67,870. This year we're at 51,845. So we decreased our expenses by 16,025. The majority of that decrease is coming from labor salary since we were using the CARES Act money to fund a maintenance worker salary for unit turnover. Also, the landscape and ground contract is lower. We have had, we did not have as much snow removal this year. And then also the unit turnover contracts and the janitorial contracts. And I know last year we talked to the board when we did the budget for 2021 and we promised that we would not utilize unit turnover anymore since we have a full maintenance staff. So this is why you're seeing those expenses go down compared to prior year.
And we highlighted the total utilities because it demonstrates the savings, right? That's one of our, our goals in our recovery plan is to show where we can show savings. There, we're, we're very hopeful that's a full savings there. There could be some issues here where potentially things weren't quite tallied up or is there any reason we would have any bills that we didn't get paid when this came through? So this, this should be true savings of 26,000. I'm just, I, it's a good chunk of energy and utility savings. So I'm, I'm a little hesitant to say they might cash our check later or something. I don't know. But that's a, that's a big one.
It looks like a gift, doesn't it?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Then we highlighted this bottom number. We did have a decrease in our net position for the month of 10,925. But again, when you compare our prior year to our current year, prior year, we only had a net position of 6,614. Current year, we're setting at 76,745. So we've increased our net position in the year of over, compared to the prior year of 70,000, which is very good. I just highlighted that again since it's capital fund money, just so you guys know that there's no excess capital fund money setting in our bank account. Housing choice vouchers fiscal year to date net profit for March is 10,876.54. Operating reserve balance for March is 25,009, or 25,793.19. And then I, we highlighted that accounts payable to low rent, you can see it's zero. So both sides are setting at zero. And then increase, decrease in that position. We increased our net position in our admin of 653, so $653 we saved this month in admin. The total increase, decrease in that position for our section eight voucher cap payment, which is housing assistant payment. We were so close of spending all of our money by $11.52. I would say we're at 99.999% utilized. So total net position increase for the month of 665.16.
Okay.
On that one, it's kind of, this is one we want to see closer to zero. We don't want to see this one go up. So just, it's kind of different than our reserves, right? So we're trying to get the section eight money out and we're trying to get the public housing money in.
Okay. Does anybody have any additional questions for Mandy?
Yes. How does this, this analysis and this discussion, how is this looked at in your ongoing conversations with HUD? And what are they specifically looking at in these reports? Like what are the end numbers or the specific line items that they're focused on?
So in my discussions with HUD, with that spreadsheet that I sent you last month, Jamie, they're, they're literally keying in on our balance sheet. Erin, if you can go up to Marches, I think it's page two of, of the public housing.
This makes, this makes you dizzy.
So all they're interested in is that one chart?
Okay. Oh, go, go one more page down, Erin, or go two more pages down. One more after that.
She wants that Excel chart.
So Jamie, this is what they're focused in on. They are focused in on our receivables, our payables, our tenant accounts receivable. And then they're focused in our, on our dwelling rental. And they're focused in on our total expenses.
Okay. Are there any expense items? I, we already kind of know a bit about the receivable conversations they're having. Are there any of the expense items that they're very focused on or that, that we should be cognizant of as a board in terms of making sure, just to know kind of what your motivations are as an operational team and planning?
They have not made a comment about our expenses, but I have not received an official written report from Pete, who is our financial analyst. Usually when he reviews these reports, he will send out an email with a written report on how we're doing. If there's anything we need to watch, is there any expenses that are getting high? Is there anything we can do different? We have not received that report yet and I believe we probably haven't just because of the conversations with the management agreement that we have going on. But I will reach out to him tomorrow and, and see if we can get that report and get that sent out to you guys. But in my almost daily conversations with him lately, it's been more about that receivable from Flint Hills than it has really been our MHA expenses.
Thank you. In general, what's the tone been of those conversations? So they, are they pretty relaxed and comfortable or are they? How do you feel about those conversations?
You know, my, my conversations with Pete and Doug, and Doug is our, he's like our assessment person. I have no problem talking with Doug or Pete and they're very relaxed. They're, you know, they're very understanding. If they have a question, they ask it. And I don't hold any bars back when I answer those questions. There has been some meetings with Adam Austin, who's the auditor for HUD. He can kind of be over the top sometimes, but the bottom line is, is, you know, these are our financials. This is our housing authority. We're responsible for it and we completely understand that. But he, he's never been, you know, disgruntled with Erin or I that I know of. Definitely in my conversations with him, not at all. So talking with HUD, I, I think HUD sees us coming out of troubled status and I think they're excited not to have to oversee Manhattan Housing Authority here pretty soon, for sure. So yes, but
As are we. We're excited for that too.
I think they're, they're very much, and even with Adam, has been very much looking at these assets and liabilities and trying to find ways to get those taken care of. They're not so much worried about our revenue or our expenses. They're worried about this liability, particularly here with the Flint Hills. And they're, they're working hard and they're, they're giving us every opportunity to find more revenue. I think you're going to hear in a little bit, I'll talk more about that. But we have lots of reasons to be like we're, we're expanding and growing. While the same time, they see that in a functional way on, on, on these spreadsheets and on the new data that's coming in, but they're, they're being held But they're, they're being held to a 2018, 2019 look at, at things. And so they know that we're in much better shape financially than it looked like in 2018 and 19. And so they're excited about that. The one thing that they got to reconcile to close those books is this Flint Hills thing. And we'll talk more about that.
I, I, I do have a follow-up question to the conversations we've had, we've had in the past. And that is with our fee accountant and the timing of these reports so that we actually get them and have an opportunity to review them prior to the meeting rather than, anyway. So, um, since the fee accountant is not flexible and cannot change the timing of their reports, we could consider changing the timing of our, of our monthly meetings. It's to, this one has worked out fine, it's last Wednesday of the month. Has that helped you with your process so that the board could get the financial reports in a more timely way?
Well, I, I'll say that we're, we're, we're exploring the contract currently with this fee account. So that's something that we're going to have to renew soon. And I don't know that it's the timing of our meeting has really any bearing. And I'm not quite sure that it's all, the, the workload for the fee accountant is quite high because they're servicing so many different housing authorities and trying to meet HUD needs. So what you got was three months worth and they churned those out for us like in rapid fire. Once they got over this beast of the end of the year stuff for the entire, you know, portfolio that they had. So I don't expect us to have like problems month to month. It's just that end of year and the capacity they have to serve all their clients. And I think that's something we're going to make a priority as we talk to them with our contract. That they're not pushing us down and putting us at the bottom of the pile kind of thing. We need, we need some assurances. We've already had those discussions with our accountant, so our, I mean, our auditor and our, our independent auditor is separate from the fee accountant. Those two need to work for us so we can provide, the city of Manhattan is also wanting to be involved in discussions of how we provide our information to them for auditing purposes because they're, they've already reached out to us. Mandy and I have a meeting with them next week about, with Rena at the finance because they need our financials and our audits in a timely fashion so that they, because the city gets held accountable for the housing authority part of that. So that, that whole is a bigger discussion, but I don't think changing, moving your meeting time is going to fix or help the auditor, our, our fee account. I mean, it's more of a capacity to deliver the goods. And they're, the, my understanding, Mandy would know, is that the one that we switched from was not as, was even more delayed than the current one. So we might not like what we're getting, but lately we like what we're getting because they've been delivering post-end of year stuff very efficiently and working with Mandy very, very quickly.
I'm just thinking back to the HUD criticism of this board and the financial analysis part. And when we can't see final, when we have to consider three months financial reports at one time because we didn't, because of the fee accountant, as far as I'm concerned, I don't consider that we are being effective in a future review by HUD. And so just having said that, if, if HUD can live with three months of reports at a time, I don't care about whether it's the end of the year or not, three months, we're pretty stifled in making any kind of progress. So I just want to, to raise that issue. And if nobody else is concerned about it, I'm okay with it. But I, I think that it's a cause for concern. So I'll just leave it with that.
Linda, I think that what Aaron is suggesting is that from, for the rest of the year, we will most likely be getting everything each month. And that this first quarter is problematic and that he's going to negotiate about that with the fee account.
When does the new contract start?
Um, it's, it's said behind me, I have to read through it and make sure, but I know that they're, they're, they're trying to get me to renew. So we have, we have some talking to do about delivery on their end because we have, our board certainly has higher expectations than what they've been getting. So that's, that's what I'll talk to them about. I, I will say that we, well, you, you threw me off, Jan. I, I know that I had something that, to address Linda's question, but if it comes back to me, I will, I'll let you know. But in regard to the accounting, there is something that's relevant that I think, oh, it's, it's about the HUD being worried about the board and, and those types of things. I, I don't get that sense at all. They, they understand and they, I think, want to find different ways to help get you tools to be successful in making decisions and they understand you're in charge. They understand when I tell them that the board, I need to run this by the board, we need to talk about this with the board, that they, they have received that well. They haven't said anything disparaging or anything like that. It's been very, very good, I think. So just so you know that, I don't, I know that letter was not great, but I don't, maybe these new people, maybe these people are new in some regard, but that, uh, don't, don't, I guess dwell on that so much.
That, that letter still burns in our mind. And quite frankly, uh, we are not in charge of this. We can't, we cannot get, we have no ability to affect this financial reporting process and get it done faster. There's just, as much as we have struggled with it and it, and it continues to be, anyway, I just, when, when it's fixed, let me know.
Okay.
Hey, hey Linda, I'll just add, I do have emails with Pete, who is our financial person at HUD. So I'm completely understanding that he would not see January or February till probably the first part of March, the middle of March because he understands there's year-end processes to be done and there's operating subsidy calculations that have to be done within February or March. So, and I truly believe the reason why I have not received his report yet is because he had to look through those operating subsidy calculations as well, plus the ongoing issue with the accounts receivable. So I do have documentation via email from Pete in regards to those. And he completely understands that being a year end of twelve thirty-one, we won't see the financials until almost the middle of February, the middle, or the end of February.
I, I, it is Austin, the HUD auditor, that was responsible for the letter and the tone. And so I, we can talk nicely to all of the other people, but we also get, you know, we didn't see being nailed coming either. So I'm not willing to give them a pass because there was just unwarranted.
Well, another thing to consider as we talk through financials in the future is we're going to have probably more scrutiny and more audits than you've ever had as a commission. We've already got the section eight one geared up for next week. They, there, there's not going to be probably, I'm anticipating there's not going to be a month between now and the end of the year where somebody is not looking through our books. And so the spotlight is going to be as bright as it can ever be. We have nothing to hide and we're going to show and clean up anything that we need to clean up. But in that sense, I think there's not going to be a period of time where they could say there was three months that the board was, we're going to have more people looking at our books than I've ever looked at our books before. And we'll also have more money, so that's good.
Okay, are any other questions or issues over the financial reports? If not, let's move on to the executive director's report.
All right, so one thing, and Commissioner Olson came by for a brief tour and I think I got, uh, I got so excited and during her tour, talking about things that I forgot to even show her one of the units. And I didn't realize that until the next day. I was like, we just started talking about all the different things that we didn't, we, we didn't look at inside one of the studios that we had ready to go. So you'll have to come back and everyone else is open. And I think Brad wants to come and get some stuff done. But one of the things that I've noticed is it's really a high priority for our staff where it's professional development trained. And so we're trying to get, I mean, of course you guys want me to get trained and I want to get trained. And so I'm not, not, this includes two months worth of things. I, I completed the, the narrow rent calculation and the executive director's workshop. But we're also trying to do some other things to keep ahead of the curve as HUD is vastly expanding its reach in various ways with the new vouchers and potentially a repositioning discussions. Mandy's done both more narrow and financial thing, training CPA. She just finished that, which I think she was pretty excited about being able to do some of the books. I, I think it's, it's fun to see Mandy, because she'll, she'll do her accounting and then she'll basically do what we're potentially paying somebody else to do, to check the work. And then she, she gets excited when she sends it off because she wants to see if she got it right, to see if the test, it's almost like she takes her own test to see if she's getting her own numbers back the way that she thought that they would do them. So I, I would think, I think Mandy's training herself every day when she's doing that. But then to get more additional training on top of that with the financial reporting is, I, I know she enjoyed that and was excited about, um, this, this Lindsay is our, the, the system we use internally that is slowly being integrated into our website so we can do work orders and communicate and track things better digitally. We're kind of, like I said, halfway in this transition of digital and the biggest holdup is this MRI Lindsay integration. Our servers are ready, everything's ready on our end. It's the integration of that. And so Mandy's been on top of that and keeping me updated. And we do trainings on those as they come out. Patrick Fair Housing, he, he did some of the certification with the KHRC as is required. And then we just had a mission-driven social media training that Alyssa signed up for. But I highlighted this because our biggest need, and maybe the commission can send some ideas or Nuke Brad, if you have ideas, because our maintenance guys, they, they're so hungry for deeper training. They had this central mechanical is, you know, who we contract with for HVAC and they're some of the best trainers on HVAC too in the area. They came and they did a training with the guys last Friday. And I think it was, it was very good, but they wanted, they want deeper, they want more materials. They, they want more than anything, more training. So that's why I put this up here front and center is how we can, even books, like the, I, the maintenance guys have been taking the operations manuals home and reading them just for fun, which sounds horrible to me, but they like are hungry for this stuff. And then these, these are things that we, I know that we all need for all staff and that I've been told that in one of the million audits, audits that we'll have in the next year, they're going to be looking for these things. So these are going to be probably on our radar, will get on schedule for all staff as soon as we can. So everybody is compliant in those. And you'll also notice there was an increase in the training budget because of this. And so I'm, I'm focusing on this more because we did increase the training budget and decrease some other things. But there's, this is where the training, this is where people want their time and resources spent on the staff.
Erin, do you do a, in the upcoming trainings, do you do a annual CPR and basic first aid training for your staff?
We sure can.
That's, to me, that's always a good thing for all staffs to know. You know, hopefully you never need it, but the one time you do, it'll be worth it. So
Yeah.
Those you can, I mean, you can get those for low or no cost, so.
We'll get with the Red Cross or we can, I think they're doing those virtually too now. So we can do some of that. And Friday mornings, we've been doing staff meetings, but we're also going to start incorporating Friday mornings as training days so we can knock some of those certifications out all at once.
If you would like some suggestions, at least on the maintenance side of things, I'd, I'd be happy to maybe just throw a couple of things your way at some point that I think might be helpful.
Much appreciated. Send them, send them all my way.
That's why we're happy you're here.
It might be possible, Erin, to collaborate with K-State or the city that are also doing CPR training and even that mental health first aid was something that I think, I don't know if it was, I think it was Pawnee that was giving it. So, but pairing up with somebody that's already giving it so we don't have to, because we only have like not, what, nine employees? So it's a little harder to pull everybody out for a time. If those are ongoing, then our staff could just slip into those other settings and still get the training.
Absolutely. And Pawnee, I would have liked to already have the mental health first aid done, but Pawnee is going through their own retraining. So they're, that's queued up for, I think, later in May is when they'll be able, and they'll be able to come visit and do onsite, I think. There'll be a small cost, but we, we got that budget for it. But I really need help with the maintenance and any kind of stuff. So Brad, that would be great.
Do you have champagne for this next one?
No, no champagne.
Ninety percent, oh my gosh.
Yes, all right. So, um, yeah, this is a good, this is a good number. And there, there hasn't, there hasn't been, I was trying to think of what, what is, what has been the driving force behind how we got here so we can keep going and recognize what we did. And I think for the most part, it really has been definitely between January and March, where you saw us go from seventy-seven to eighty-six, was Mandy putting into a system of holding the maintenance accountable and keeping people on the same page of what needs to be done, putting the focus on the turning of units. Like you heard, we, there's been expenses and building materials. Well, there's been a, a high focus on that. And so that, that culture and that refocus of those goals, mixed with weekly meetings where sit down and talk about what's wrong with each single unit we have, even the, the ones nobody wants to talk about or touch because they're so awful. And they haven't been, you know, fixed for a while and they're, we, we talked through those and have made tons of progress across the whole grid. And they're, we, we talked through those and have made tons of progress across the whole grid. And so we're, we're, they say, you know, how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time? And I think we, we've been taking lots of bites, and it's just really surprising to see we're close to ninety already. We're gonna have a dip, and I'll talk about, well, I can talk about that here, I guess. But let me just recognize, it's really our maintenance staff and the idea that they put an individual at each building, so they're not being pulled in certain various directions. If somebody needs to do something at a different building, a non-emergency order comes up, somebody's already there and can kind of handle it while they're also working on vacancies and occupancies at that site. So having individual maintenance staff assigned to individual sites rather than four, working on one and kind of going in a hive is, has been pretty effective. And it keeps a connection to those sites and the buildings. And then you're bringing everybody together, at least on Fridays, to talk through the progress. And those meetings have been good because people can share, maintenance can share the issues that they've experienced in different sites, what, what is, what they expected to be done, didn't get, they didn't get far enough done, or maybe somebody got farther ahead, so they can shift over and help. It's just been really productive. And a lot of that was facilitated early on by Mandy. And Patrick and Mike are doing good following, carrying out those, those goals to get us to the ninety percent. Now ninety percent means we get zero points, but we start to get points after ninety percent. So that's what this scale is down here, and we want to achieve occupancy points. Part of this focus on occupancy is based on our scoring. And when we got scored for being troubled, it was a very low score. We had, we had a very low, we had zero points for occupancy. There's a way to get sixteen points, and that's, we want to get sixteen points just in case we get, we get being somewhere else that we just can't avoid. This is, this is something we can control, and we have more supply, or we have more demand, and we have the supply to meet that. So we just need to turn the units and get people in there.
Aaron, um, the ninety percent, that is the national standard that HUD uses, is that correct? It's not specific to us. And in the past, we have, I believe, talked to HUD about getting an allowance for the market rental rates. Is that accurate? And Mandy, you might need to help on that. I'm not sure when or if we did that, but I wanted to confirm if that's something that we did do.
So you might be thinking of, we take units offline, or we, we get like waivers because of market conditions?
Yes, I think, well, and that's kind of what I'm asking is if there's, I know there's a waiver, there's the offline units, and then there's market condition waivers. But I don't believe that we were able to get that when we requested it. Is that accurate?
Correct, Jamie, you, you're correct. And the reason why we did not get it last year was because we could not show enough marketing for the unit. In order to get that changing marketing condition, the unit has to be ready to go. And we have to be able to show there's, there's not a need on the housing, or on the housing authority waiting list for public housing. And we also have to show adequate proof of marketing of those units. And HUD determined we did not show adequate marketing last year for those units.
Okay.
And those, those units, in order to be for changing market, have to be ready within thirty days. And ours were not. We, we are working on the ones that come vacant recent. If there's not much to do in them, we're, we're trying to get the guys in there, get it turned around, get somebody in there. So we meet that thirty-day threshold going forward.
So we are, what you just said, I'm gonna kind of recap, but then I'll, sorry, I have some noise that's happening. So we are actively trying to make it so that we would qualify for that market waiver this year. Okay, thank you.
And I, I, I think early indications would show that we, we should be able to fill again. I mean, like, a drop in the bucket in marketing has doubled our waitlist. So I, I think we're better served right now, and not, not suggesting that that's what you're, you're, you're thinking, but trying to fill those units than trying to get waivers because we are not able to get those units filled. We, we might be able to get a waiver for units that are not able to be revamped in, in a way to, but that, that's something we're, we're working on too. Getting units offline that are like that, that one we got offline that had the mold remediation. Because if we're gonna get to ninety-six points, or ninety-six percent, we're gonna have to take some of those offline that just, we don't have enough capital funds, or we don't have enough, we, we just don't know that we can put people or pay to get them where they're livable. So those are, need to be taken offline.
Thank you for expanding on that.
I wish it was the mark, well, actually I don't. I know there's, there's places in Montana, for example, that they have more supply than demand. And so they easily will get those waivers because they have more affordable housing than they have people in the community. And we're not gonna be able to make that case very easy. They started first, the maintenance guys, led by Mike Motley, then they, they restarted their first Friday cleanup. And that's kind of, that is another time where they come together and they're, they're cleaning up sites, doing things collectively, larger picture, out, some outside insight. And then you can see the numbers there of the work orders and what's being processed. There's also one contract on the other that was approved, and you'll, it's in the packet for Hummel. And they've already, I don't know if they're complete, but they're close to complete with their work with the tree cutting. And they came in substantially less in a way that we were able to save money that had been budgeted and redirected. And I think Joanna had talked about that multiple times in the past. So they, they, there was some negotiations there. We did not end up doing a tree trimming at Point Hills Improvements. And part, this became, this, this came before we even had paused our efforts there because there had been a request that FHI pay part for that out of their operating reserve or replacement reserve to help with the cost of the tree trimming, and that was rejected. And so we just didn't do the tree trimming there. And that leads us into a conversation about our management contracts, which I think this is, there's, this has consumed at least eighty-five percent of my time in the last two weeks or three weeks. And it would be, we have a hundred and thirty pages in this packet because there's a lot of things you wanted, you and we all want to get done. But I will tell you that, that, like, these three lines here and this, everything that alludes to FHI and that relationship has taken a significant toll on the staff and our time and our legal and all of the, the work in our, our relationships with HUD. It is all really focused on that. So our packet is, unfortunately, we're also doing all this other work and trying to make it happen. But I don't want to spend your time during this meeting going through FHI, but I will request that we do, we need a work session or we need a board retreat in the next two weeks, if possible, because it is an urgent situation. Too much for us to cover tonight in a fair way. And I need to get you some good information and reports to review before that retreat or that work session so you have a good base of where we're at, what legal has talked about, what the partnerships are like, the right to refusal, all, all of those things. Yeah, Jan?
In two sentences, what was the reaction to that letter?
Hey, can I pause for a minute and say that because of the legal aspect of this, should we be talking about this extensively in open forum? Or is this something that we should, as you said, reserve for a session when we also are an executive?
I, it's not, it's not a problem to talk about. I, what, the focus of this should be about scheduling. I want to, if you're open to schedule that retreat or a work session to discuss our management contract, that is fine. And I, I also have two meetings with them. When I say then, I'm, I'm talking about FHI and Meg. And Meg is the Housing Equity Group that is the larger entity. And then also MAP, which Jill DeCobie, of course, is the executive director of. How we've all been, we've had multiple meetings, I've recorded those, I'd like you to review those. And I'd like to get you information to talk and think about and give me questions on. But this, this, I don't, I don't think, Jamie, that there's anything that legally, we, we can talk about this and talk about scheduling it. The, the bottom line is HUD and this board and everyone involved has agreed to a recovery plan. And that recovery plan cannot go forward and be executed without a major default and putting our million dollars of public housing in jeopardy without cleaning up that ninety thousand dollars that's owed by FHI. And our management contract cannot continue to happen without a resolution there. So that is the point of breaking point in so many ways. And I think we're at a, Craig has been in those discussions. We, we are, we're in a, a good position to have a good resolution. So to Jan, the, the reaction isn't hostile. I think we're, we're working together. We, we've had discussions, and I think Jill is wanting to work with us, and their board is. And everybody's at a, has a sense of working together to get through this. And there is a, there is a clear understanding that HUD is not messing around. And we're not messing around because we don't want to lose the opportunity to serve all of the public housing that we currently have. So to bring you up to speed on all of that would take at least, I would ask for three hours because it's not just FHI, there's three pieces. There's FHI as one piece, there's gardens as another piece that we need as part of the work session. And that's a, that's a issue because we have a right of first refusal that is due. And the board must make a decision between now and December, but they certainly would like it by the summer. And the sooner the better. And so that's a piece on the table that we have to talk about. And Brad, I can give you more information about what that looks like and the land use. But the third piece being the repositioning discussion about those whole, that whole complex and maybe a larger asset. So an hour for each topic is really important, and I don't think I can talk about any one of those things without talking about the whole repositioning.
So, so you'd like us to tell you now, can everybody look at their calendars? When we could have a three-hour block to share with, spend with discussion of these issues?
And I mean, it, it could be a weekend, it could be, what, what might work for you, but I know we have, so our next meeting is scheduled for May nineteenth. I am kind of circling back with FHI and that other group because they want a sense of where the board is and where things are. I gave them a tentative date because I met with them this morning. I gave them another tentative date as the twelfth. If we could meet between now and the twelfth, that would be ideal. But if it has to be after that, they can move their date.
Is anybody okay with like a Saturday morning? Aaron, is that okay with you?
Yeah, cartoons and Cheerios?
So we have the first and the eighth, two Saturday mornings.
Afternoons are better for me.
Okay, well, we could do the afternoon of either one of those.
I mean, Saturdays are not great.
For me, neither, really, but I know that sounds bad, being retired, but still, I'm, I've got a commitment.
I sleep till ten-thirty, so I.
Okay. Does anyone have issues with like a weekday morning, let's say?
Weekday afternoons are better for me because
Okay.
I'm usually occupied multiple mornings.
Okay.
Um, Tuesday?
The tenth, maybe, or somewhere, or would you rather do it before then, Aaron?
Yeah, the fourth.
Fine.
Tuesday morning, the fourth?
I can't do it the fourth. Too much happening.
How about the fifth?
I can do the afternoon on the fifth, but I can't do during the day. Jamie, you probably have one of the most intense schedules, so.
I'm intentionally being quiet because the next two weeks are my finals, and I have three finals and a paper due for graduation. So I, I'm gonna say that whatever you decide, I have flexibility within reason. But I, it's not a great two-week period for me to fit in any three-hour windows, so.
Yes, the next time we see Jamie, she's gonna be an attorney.
But depending on how this next two week goes.
Oh, it's gonna be fine. We have no doubt that it'll be fine.
Let, let me ask about the availability on the sixth. It's a Thursday.
I can do the sixth in the afternoon.
Whatever I want to.
I can do the sixth as long as it's early afternoon.
Hey, Aaron, I will not be here on the sixth.
Yeah, Mandy's got a personal trip.
Are you just gone one day, or you gone the whole week, or what, Mandy?
I'm gone for a family funeral on the sixth and seventh, but I will be back in the office on the tenth.
And I think we can get, Mandy, you, you are caught up in a way that I, I think we can, we can bring back questions to you if we need to. But I think we can get to a point where we, if you didn't have, if, that doesn't prohibit, sorry, I can't talk right now. Mandy can.
Okay, we're up to the sixth in the afternoon from like one to four, is that you're saying, three hours? You think it'll take that long?
I think depending on your, your view of the gardens, it could take that long. If, it could be shorter, I, I don't, I'm, that one's a little uncertain to me, so that, that might not take a whole hour.
Well, the repositioning is gonna take up all the slack we don't use.
Well, we're not gonna settle that, that day, I don't think.
Yeah, no, just, just, I think that's plenty of time, and there'll be, I'll make sure you guys have some foundation documents around those things.
If you, if the sixth in the afternoon at one is okay, raise your hand.
You can do it, Jamie?
I, I can't guarantee what kind of mental state I'll be in.
You, you may have a glass of wine while we're meeting.
Unless you just want me to sleep through it.
It'll be good. You can sleep through it. We'll wake you when we need you. So it sounds like we're doing the sixth special meeting.
Um, I would like to let's call it a retreat, if that's okay.
You wanna call it a retreat?
Yeah, I mean, just, so it's not, it doesn't have to be as formalized as a meeting, and you guys will have more opportunity to discuss and free talk, and, uh, we'll keep it open, it'll be Zoom, but we don't necess, the, the, you know the agenda is those three bullet points. And I'll, I'll have a lot of information that you'll have before that, but the agenda topics are, uh, are the, the retreat topic is the FHI management contract, gardens, first right of refusal, and then a larger discussion on repositioning, especially as it pertains to those units. And I'll, I'll get you that, but that keeps it broad, and we don't need to treat it as a work session or a special meeting, and the flow that way a little better.
What time did we decide?
One.
Okay, thank you. I'm having trouble adding this.
And I, I say that because whatever action we start to decide towards, we won't take action at the retreat, but if there is voting action that needs to happen, we can then put it on the agenda for the nineteenth. And that way, it's more vetted out, we can get public input on it. There won't be any voting action at the retreat. It's just a discussion to make sure I understand where the board is, so when I'm conveying that to the other groups, we're all kind of getting a sense of where we need to be as we line up.
I'm having trouble answering.
All right. So HUD regulations, those are two clickable links, um, to different, uh, agenda, are different information. One is housing, one's obviously the, kind of the narrow legislative agenda. Vaccinations, we've all had an opportunity to be vaccinated, the different facilities, uh, I guess the buildings, the residents, the communities have had opportunities to be vaccinated, not just with the health department, but with, uh, local pharmacies, and some have come on, onsite to deliver those, and we can turn, we continue to encourage people to get vaccinated, but we're, we're certainly not at a hundred percent, and there's people that have different reasons that they, uh, have not been vaccinated. And grants and other revenue. So I did send you kind of that Housing Solutions Collaborative, which was really kind of a, a found, it's a great foundational document that we can use as we apply for these other grants as well, uh, because it did include a lot of the information that is the most recent, uh, collected about the environmental scan from the city. This was a collaborative in sorts already because Assistant City Manager Dennis Marstall and Donna Shane Hamlin and I worked together to do that application. Turned it around very quickly, um, and I think it, it paint, it helps us set up for some of these other opportunities as well. But if we do receive that grant, it is a ten thousand dollar award, it would come to the housing authority, we would receive that stipend. Um, it does include all those partners, uh, including MISI, Beable, Pawnee, different, all of the partners that we wanted to have at the table to discuss housing, um, and that ten thousand dollars would be used to provide educational tools or opportunities to travel if there is, um, for those group members to go to the eight other cities, um, to kind of share what not just the housing authorities are doing in those areas, but what other innovative solutions are going around, uh, the larger scope of housing. So that, that is, we ended up, I, I accepted the ability to be the grant nominee of to receive the stipend in part because K-State, um, dead, or the Workforce Solar Housing Partnership didn't have a way to receive the funds, and so we're acting in that capacity of the stipend. It's not going to get us a new staff member, though, so. So if we do receive the ten thousand, it's kind of already allocated out to those other partners in that sense, but it does give us a lot of good information and helps us bring the people together. Um, self, the self-sufficiency family self, FSS grant is something we've had in the past, and we're gonna pursue, uh, lead, you can see the lead paint, um, lead-based paint is an opportunity to get, and the Ross is, I think the Ross Service Grant is actually a September, or it's an August deadline, so I need to update that. But these, eh, these emergency safety, security grant equipment and the housing-related hazards capital fund, those two, May twenty-fifth and June second are real opportunities for us, and I think we, Joanne, I failed to get one submitted on time last year, but we have most of it complete, or we have it all complete, so there shouldn't be a whole lot of new information that goes into one of these emergency safety and security grants. The other one, um, the hazard, related hazards capital fund can also help address mold and radon, and so those are things that we need to test for, um, and have a source of revenue right there that is on our radar, we gotta get applied for. I highlighted the, the CARES Act funding, that is something Mandy has almost completed, nearly complete. Uh, it's, uh, not guaranteed by any means, but it is certainly something that the CDBG, um, through the community development has funding for, and we have eighty-two thousand dollars in what we believe are eligible expenses to be reimbursed, uh, or used for that CARES funding that the community, city's community development has, um, currently. So we'll be submitting that. I don't know how much of that, or if any, we'll get, but it is potential new revenue.
I have a question, quick question. Any of those big ones, the two hundred and fifty thousand and the seven seventeen, or any of those okay to use for the uh, heating and cooling in Carlson?
Um, well, the capital fund, Health, the Housing Related Hazard Capital Fund, the top one, the four million?
Yeah.
That might have the best, when we're talking about the, like, the boiler, the chiller, the cooling, and Carlson really gonna come down to an emergent, uh, not that emergency grant, but the emergency fund like they did before, and that's like an eight million dollar sitting, um, account that HUD will grant if it's a true emergency. We see the train on the tracks on that one. I've talked to Carlson residents about it. If it, we know that there's potentially a problem, if it, if that goes out in the summer, it will truly be an emergency. Um, unfortunately, the critical needs assessment that we, we have on hand right now doesn't doesn't give us the info we thought it would. It doesn't say that, that, it says it needs to be resolved in a year. It doesn't say it's an immediate need as tomorrow, which I think everyone on the commission and us included as staff think that it needs to be addressed as, as soon as possible. We just don't have that was an independent
Well, I think, uh, excuse me, Aaron, but I think that's the kind of grant that we submitted for the apartment towers, and we asked for eight million, and we got five point two. Right, Mandy?
Yes, it was the emergency grant.
Oh, was it? It was the, this, okay, for equipment?
Well, it was for the whole building.
There's an emergency fund, but this is a, but this is a different type of grant.
Okay.
HUD has an emergency fund that they set aside, I think, twenty million or so, and we asked for, but, uh, we'll come, we'll try both.
I also think it took a year and a half or two years to get it.
Yes, and we have
Mandy can tell me on that, too. I mean, it took forever.
Part of, part of these also might help pay for the elevator repair.
Okay, yeah.
That, that's a big chunk. Great Bend used this one, um, the Emergency Safety Security Grant, combined with a couple of other things to get their elevators repaired. We have their proposal and the elevator people that are currently doing it. They have an identical elevator setup as we do in the towers. The only way they pulled that off is getting several of these grants lined up, and it took them almost eight years. So, uh, I, I, I am trying to figure out how we pulled elevator, elevator expense, Brad, might be eight hundred thousand. Um, it's, it's a big amount, and we gotta line up lots of different capital funds to get that.
Are you talking repair or replacement?
Gotta replace it.
It's almost the same.
Okay, replace.
They're, they're functional, there's nothing wrong with them, but it's just, it's gotta be done soon, so.
Okay. Next.
Real quick, and we don't have to answer this now, but just something for consideration. As we work through these grants, can we make sure that we're evaluating the effect that they have with our balance sheet and our subsidies and our ability, our ability to get the income from HUD that we need, and make sure none of it puts us in jeopardy of receiving what, something that we might benefit more from?
Right. Absolutely. And I, I will tell you, on the F, FSS and the Ross, those two are things that we've had in the past, and they, they did kind of carry us through some bad times, um, because we actually were able to secure funding that way. When we lost, uh, that, it put Section Eight in a position that was harder to manage and kind of where we are now. So now that Section Eight is back growing, expanding, receiving more funds, that's where, uh, Kat is asking we really need to get this FSS and this Ross because it's, uh, it's possible to help her in, in carrying that, that load. This last point, the, the rooftop, I do need a little bit of guidance from you guys. I've been negotiating with, uh, AT&amp;T, um, on the rooftop tower, and they are they came in pretty low, they came in with a comparable offer that, that they proposed eight years ago. Um, and so I have gone back and forth. Currently, the offer, um, is my count, the counter to them is two thousand dollars a month, um, with a three percent increase and a four thousand dollar one-time payment. That, there'll be some more back and forth, but that is waiting. That level has to get AT&amp;T approval, um, at a, at a higher threshold than they're able to do. The, they approached us, it wasn't something I sought out, it's, they approached us, they toured, uh, the roof, they know that we're the prime location uh, for what they're trying to do, and there is a place and space for them to do it. We have two other towers up there, um, that are obviously paying us out, uh, monthly, and this would be in line with what they're paying, and potentially a little bit better, um, because we're essentially the only show in town, um, when it comes to this capacity, and we're taking some risk and liability um, and just extra time. So I think it's worth us holding to that, but I would need some guidance from you if you would be willing to come lower, um, and would direct me to, to come lower than that threshold right there, or just give me guidance to work with the, the offer from AT&amp;T. We don't, one thing that we'll make sure is that it's structurally sound, and Brad, maybe I can talk to you offline about how that, how that looks with what we currently have, um, because we do have, had, we've had an engineer assess it in the past for the other towers, and what is structurally sound and where it could be lined up. If we need to go back for that, I, I think that would be a, an ask that we would make sure AT&amp;T covered. Other than that, I tried to get them to pay for our iPads, and they don't do equipment. I tried to get everything I can out of them, so this is really the, this is probably the top end of what we can expect, um, but just wanted you guys to know where we're at with that, and that that's a possibility, and if you're good with it, uh, I'll, I'll proceed.
I think you ought to try to get the most you can, and certainly no less than what the other towers from eight years ago, or, you know, I, we don't want to, uh, we do have a prime location, and I don't think there's anything comparable, maybe except Commerce Bank, and, uh, that's that high, although where am I, guess? But anyway, I think it's worthwhile, we need to make it worthwhile, too. We have a property and we're renting it, so that's a um, this, this is something that needs to come back to the board when you get the contract ready, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And I, I just I wanna be able to say this is paying for somebody.
Yep, good.
I wanna say this is paying for, uh, staff or to help with resident services or something, and so going much lower gets us pretty low on the salary scale for somebody, so trying to keep it up there.
AT&amp;T is pretty big. I think it's, uh, they can pay for, pay their way.
Okay.
I agree.
Aaron, let me know if you'd like to talk about the structural portions of that.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Um, grievances, we have had some, this has been a new process for me. Uh, we've had one that was had to be handled by an independent, somebody, uh, we had an independent hearing outside of me, uh, and that has been resolved, um, outside of us, and so just kind of following these procedures, uh, you'll, on that timeline of policies that we're gonna be updating, you're gonna have a grievance policy update in the, the summer. Right now, I'm following the current protocol that's been in place, and I don't expect there'll be much of a change to that other than I would like to have this online soon. The, there is a there are certainly residents that don't have access to online that will need to continue to file, uh, a grievance or a complaint writ, uh, written, or even can call it in, and we can write it for them, but, uh, getting a, a form online would be a lot easier, I think, a lot better, and we can account for the glitches in the mail, and things are lost in the mail, and all of that, it's kind of a interesting dynamic that happens in these grievance hearing.
It's true.
Um, so we do have the beginnings of a resident advisory council. Um, Alice Nandorf, Nandorf at, uh, has been, somebody that's been meeting with me and talking with us frequently. Um, she has agreed to
Can you grab dinner?
Oh.
That's, that's okay. She muted.
Um, so we're seeking other, what we're calling the Resident Advisory Council members, right? So we need people from each of these other facilities, and we could potentially pair up Hudson and Bear as a family, or Hudson, Pot, and Bear, it could be one person that kind of if we only get one family member and they can hear, what we wanna do is get this council going by the summer. Currently, Alice is the only one for sure that's been, um, willing to come forward and be part of that council. She's got a, uh, full book of binder and kinda done, did a, a briefing. Of what that involves. And the primary function of the resident advisory council is to have input in our annual plan. As we provide the annual plan to HUD, there's been multiple years. We haven't had any resident input into that annual plan. And so that's what we're trying to accomplish. That's their goal. Um, uh, that's, that's kinda the. I guess the, the stick from HUD is you need to have, but there's a lot more. That's involved in a resident advisory council and the ability to communicate the needs of each building. And have that, uh, almost what we'll see later as hosts and kinda those concerns that come up. And they're, they're varied. They're different. Carlson even has different needs than the towers. And we group those needs together sometimes, but every, every side is very specific. Yeah.
Do you have some kind of timeline or have you set up some kind of expectation for, I know you only have one person so far? But, um, what they can expect as far as speed of response on maintenance issues and things like that. I, they only see things from where they are.
Right.
And it can feel like they're being completely ignored. Um, and so. I understand that's a lot of the, the maintenance issues at Carlson are. They see what's on the surface, but we know it's a, a much bigger maintenance issue that is not a quick fix. Is there kind of a, you may not even have it set up yet, but just like a system or a, a timeline? For getting back to people with responses for their concerns?
Well, so currently, for example, with, with Alice and Carlson. We have a standing meeting each month, right? So she, she and I will meet and it's, uh, scheduled. Every month it's set, um, I, and that will be, I think I have it as the third Monday of each month. Um, in the afternoon. And so there's like two hours dedicated to, uh, checking the progress. Of what has been brought for that facility and hearing what has been done and what hasn't been done. Um, but that's not the only, that's, like I said, that's not the goal of the resident advisory council. That just happens to be a very, uh, prominent problem at the moment. Um, but the goal is to inform the plan for the entire larger picture. And that of, of the entire housing authority. But expectations, I think. Are important and we, we're trying to, I, I guess. Make sure that the residents are, that, I don't want that resident advisory council to be set up for failure. If, if, if they think that it's going to be an opportunity to, um, only bring. Certain concerns forward, that it has to be a co, more of a comprehensive council. And that's why that binder was put together a month ago and delivered to Alice. Uh, in a way that we can talk about what that structure looks like for a council, how there can be constructive. And what that feedback goes back and forth, um, and how we can measure progress and what we're doing. And what those roles look like, uh, from a residence. Because I think there is a, it's going to be very easy to, um. Confuse the roles of I have a work order or a resident, uh, that isn't being addressed. But that's not the same as the scope as the resident council. That might be a problem that lingers. Um, that needs to be brought forward and addressed. But so we're in a messy place right now as we, as we try to. Stand up a council that doesn't exist with residents that have needs that are pressing. And some of those needs are what drive, motivates them to be part of the council. Um, so I think we gotta try to just be flexible. It's hard to. But that standing meeting is always going to be there and I think, um, with each of those members. So that's, I'm willing to give two to three hour, two hours to each of these members once a month. Um, until we get to a point where we can collectively meet as a council. And hopefully that's this summer and we can start having two to three hour meetings monthly as a council. Um, separate from this and they can inform the plan that way.
How are you finding your recruits? Do you have an, have, do we have a newsletter yet? Or how are you recruiting these, the tenants if you can't communicate with them?
We knew that, uh, you would want this newsletter, Linda. I knew it.
I, I emailed Mandy. I was gonna ask about it.
I highlighted it here. So part of my performance measures, and you can hold me accountable because this is part of it.
I know.
Is get that, get that monthly newsletter started and, um, I talked to.
I tell you, my original request was that Joanne Sutton was gonna do that during those last two weeks. She was there.
She did.
I was asking for a copy of it is how it got started.
She, we, we owe you that hard copy. We haven't figured out, and this is in part just, I don't know. We, we can print you off one and give it to you, but we haven't figured out how to convert eleven by seventeen publisher into a PDF that's readable. So we could email it to you. There is a newsletter that exists, um, but she did it in publisher and she did it on eleven by seventeen. Uh, format anyway, but that doesn't.
So you hung it as posters in each of the buildings or?
No, everybody, everybody got a newsletter, uh, at their door.
But they got a paper, eleven by seventeen paper?
Yeah, and they, she's folded up and.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that doesn't, we're not doing it that way anymore.
Okay, good.
You will have, so there'll be one more paper newsletter that is, I'm hoping to have ready by Friday. For going forward and then that newsletter will tell people they need to sign up digitally. And show them where to go. We, we've haven't had a lot of success so far getting people to register their emails. We're trying. Um, but that, that'll be a lot, you'll get those and it'll go out to not just the residents. It'll be a community.
I don't, you need to move on with the meeting. You've still got lots to do.
Okay, sorry. So the marketing update, um. This is eleven hundred and ninety impressions and the cost on that. This is just Google ad, people searching. I think that the key takeaway here, the cost was two hundred and thirty dollars. We, we, we got, we generated forty three calls just from that ad. Um, and so it's hard to track the clicks. The conversions on our website doesn't register here. I, I know that we had people, um, but the, just the forty three calls alone make that worth it. The, and this is, that's what it looks like, you know, it might show up on, on, when you search for housing or something. But then the, the Google or Facebook and Instagram, social media. Another two hundred and thirty dollars in a month. So the takeaway here is we got eighty eight, we got in front of eighty eight hundred people on Instagram and Facebook. They had to see our ad about three times at least each. So twenty five thousand ads went in front of eight thousand people. In the Manhattan area, um. Totally, like total, including organic was eleven thousand nine hundred. So we would have been in front of, those posts would have gotten to about three thousand people. But with the boost and the two hundred and thirty dollars, it went to another eight thousand. Um, again, fair housing requirements limit who we can target. Um, it's built into the system. Uh, I don't know how much you've ever had to target fund. Uh, target ads, but it is a, there is a safe. Uh, bell safe in there that doesn't let you do things that are outside of the compliance of fair housing. So just know that, that we're not, Facebook has built that in. It doesn't let you target more narrow than is allowed by the, the law. If it's a housing ad. So these are just some of those. I know Jan spends a lot of time on social media. So I wanted her to be able to see these.
They're great.
So Aaron, back to, uh, Jamie's question about marketing. Does this, uh, social media marketing? Um, and whatever else you're doing, satisfy HUDs? Uh, uh, what we have to do for marketing in order to please HUD?
So, yes, um, short answer is we're doing, just this alone is. More information than they've had about marketing. They don't want that. They didn't like that spreadsheet. That existed before, I guess, but also what, if we just layer this into a one year, six month thing. And then I, I haven't done that quite yet because I wanted to see how effective this was. And I didn't, it, it's been tremendously effective. I, I would say we've. Are just are, we've gotten over, we've gotten forty seven applications in the last thirty days. Um, we've doubled the size of our waitlist in one month. And we've spent five hundred dollars, which that's what it would have cost for one ad in the market. And so we've done. I, I, I would say our issue isn't necessarily marketing. It's converting and hitting the right places. So suddenly when we, when I started to talk about the occupancy numbers. And the fact that we're going up to ninety percent, we're flipping units. It's a, it's a, it's not a demand issue. It's a, uh, we gotta get the supply to catch up with the demand. Cause once we turn the demand on, it's flowing and their, our lists grow quickly and we can get people in places quickly. The HUD people started to talk about, they didn't care so much about the marketing. They're like, oh, marketing, uh, apparently that's not what the problem was. Um, and so they suddenly have Doug, especially the QR code behind me. Uh, he, that was Doug's advice, our HUD program asset manager. He, he said, put a QR code out there. We, we've done that. Um, it's worked, I think. I don't know if you scanned it, it goes to the form. And we have it on our front door if people need. So just simple things like that. The earned media exposure has helped a little, but that'll fade. The news probably won't cover us as much as often. But, uh. Yeah, I don't know if that answers your question, but that, they're, they're not so much focused. They use, I could tell they were extremely focused on marketing in those first discussions about the recovery plan. That has not been the case since they've seen our numbers change, um, with occupancy. And with, uh, the, the waitlist growth. They didn't, they had no idea that we. When I told them our numbers on the waitlist, that we had a hundred and seventy on section eight, that we had eighty, um, on public housing. And that we were getting at least one every day since we started the social media marketing. They, they were said, marketing's not your problem.
But we have to have, one of the terms here, we have to have a marketing plan by June thirtieth, right?
Yep, it's right here highlighted. So that was my segue.
As it's underway, we don't have one yet.
No, because I didn't, I didn't know how much we needed to do. And I think, uh, just that testing of this month with the social media shows that we don't need to put a lot of money in marketing. Plus we already have about five thousand dollars. We can do some TV ads with, from the KSNT weather camera that's on the roof. Um, they can do the, I just, I think our, we can dedicate more of our marketing budget. Towards staff training or things that, or staff, um, or repairs.
You don't have to go on and on. I just wanted to know about this marketing plan. Have you answered that? Thank you.
Gotcha.
For now, until next month. As we get closer to that June thirtieth deadline.
The, the, uh, this is that sticking point. So you'll get, um. This is why, this is what's brought us to the need to have a retreat, these last two parts of the recovery plan. When you see this spread, the LIHTC, that's the low income housing tax credit. Um, that acronym means to us, it means FHI. That means that's the Flint Hills Improvement Properties. We manage those properties. We don't own them. And there's expenses there that on our books. Were, there was HUD dollars used. And so we need to both create a policy that makes sure. Enter fund transfers don't happen. And so I'm gonna present that at the next meeting. Uh, that'll be on your agenda on May nineteenth. And then, uh, you've done one very, it'll, it'll be very similar to the section eight enter fund transfer that you did in December. Um, you passed, you did that on December sixteenth. This one'll just address those two. And then this part right here, the FHI, that's our tax credit. Has repaid all funds to public housing. How do we provide documentation that happens? That's the. Kind of the, the crux of the whole conversation, um, and what got us to the point where. How much do they owe us? When that was discovered and roughly on our books around ninety three thousand dollars. And you saw that highlighted in the accounts receivable. We show that HUD sees that. And so they instructed me to pause and make sure nothing is done. Further with public funds to manage that property. Until we receive funds. So that, that is, the crux of all of it is right here. Um, and that is why we're having this discussion and why we need to have a retreat and I need your guidance. And everybody's at the table, cause this is the recovery plan. All right. Good news, operating subsidy is a lot more than it was last year. So a hundred and thirty thousand dollars is gonna be new. That's coming in, um, operating subsidy. We like that. That means that we've done things right. We're, we're, we're showing that we're getting more rent. We're doing, we're moving in the right direction. Um, and then another big thing is housing choice funding is increasing by approximately a hundred thousand, maybe. I don't know. Uh, we have reserves, but I do know, and this isn't in your packet, cause I just talked to Kat this morning. Um, but that short, that list, that hundred and seventy or so that was on our waiting list for section eight. Has been, uh, through the system of checking addresses and sending mail and verifying who still wants one. And the, the, who still wants to be on the list has been narrowed down to, um. Around half of that, I think. Uh, is that right, Mandy? About half, around ninety or so. Um, so ninety, that's al- also a great number. Because Kat is going to send out ninety, um, eligibility in interview opportunities. And what, that means. It's conceivable that we won't have a waitlist for section eight for the first time that we've had section eight. Um. It's conceivable that could happen in the next two months.
Yay.
And, and so we don't want, I kinda want that to happen. So I don't want everyone to go sign up for section eight now, because I'd like to get to our waitlist for the first time ever. But if you are on, if people do need to get signed up, this is the time. I mean, to get on our waitlist. We're moving through that waitlist and potentially would have within, Kat expects to have forty to fifty. New vouchers in people's hands in the next four weeks. So we're talking about getting fifty people into section eight in the next month. And that is all because we have new funding. It's looking well. And yes, we will be going through and hot it at the same time. And yes, we will be going through and hot it at the same time. But they gave us this money because things are looking well. And we're, and Kat's been doing a really good job managing that program. And everyone pitched in while she was on maternity leave. But the, the opportunity to get forty-five to fifty new people into Section Eight in the next month is pretty much unheard of. When we're talking about emergency vouchers, that'll be another twenty-five on top of that. So and then a housing stability from the government, we're going to get through our list, I think. So if people are interested in Section Eight, they should sign up. This is that tree service contract you've seen. We executed that and it came in lower than everybody else. And here we are, Commissioner comments.
I'm, I'm going to move us to the next section. I'd like, I'd like a motion that will encompass the three resolutions that have letters A, B, and C. And then we can discuss them, but then we can vote on them all at once. Somebody do that for me?
I move to approve Resolution Number zero four two eight two one dash A. Adopting the twenty twenty-one operating budget revision number three for the Manhattan Housing Authority. Resolution Number zero four two eight twenty-one dash B, authorizing disposal of excess and/or obsolete property. Resolution Number zero four two eight two one dash C. Adopting the employee handbook of the Manhattan Housing Authority.
I have a second, please.
Second.
The first two of those are things that we do all the time. Does anybody have any questions about those?
There is something that we need to point out on the first one. Because this budget revision is the opportunity for us to point out. We, the administrative expenses here, Assistant Housing Manager. So this is the realignment. We will be adding one new staff if you approve this budget revision. And I think Mandy can talk about financially how we're able to do that. I, you probably, we are able to do that. And actually, with the increases in some of the wages that we've given some of the staff, getting them to a little bit more comparable maintenance-wise. They've seen a little bump in their pay. And this would create a position for Patrick to have an assistant to help as we see expanded to the resident, resident services, Assistant Housing Manager. And then we would need to hire somebody for that position. We would offer it internally. I think there is potential for somebody internally to be interested in that. But that leaves us in a position where we still have a ten thousand dollar increase from last month of. So this, Mandy, correct me if I'm wrong, but this budget revision really shows a net increase of ten thousand dollars even with the adjustments that we're making to pay our staff, the maintenance better, to pay all our hourly increase and add a position, we'll still see a ten thousand dollar net positive because of the new funds that we've received based on what you've all just heard all about.
And yeah, I think we talked a little bit about this last time. Does anybody have any questions about that?
The only question is just making sure, and this is my standard, making sure that it fits in with HUD and the ratios that we need for getting out of troubled status. I don't want to jeopardize that, but I like the idea of adding this position and all the positives it brings. But just making sure we don't jeopardize that, those ratios.
Jamie, and I, I don't foresee us jeopardizing those ratios at all because adding a position means more units placed up, which means more income to us. So if anything, it's going to help our score a little bit by getting that occupancy up so we can get that max score and getting some more revenue coming into the Housing Authority. I just want to point out before we go on from the budget that the majority of the increase in the admin salaries and the maintenance salaries are due to moving some of Patrick's salary back, who's the Housing Manager, back into our operating budget until these negotiations are done with FHI. Some of his salary comes out of there and we have to be able to pay his salary. So we moved his salary and some, and Romeo's salary back into the budget. And even doing that and increasing the telephone costs for the new iPad systems that we have coming in, the more legal expenses that we have going on, we're, we're still going to net ten thousand more than what we had projected. The, the majority of that net is because of the additional operating subsidy that we're getting for twenty twenty-one that we did not get for twenty twenty.
Perfect. Thank you, Mandy. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Any other questions about the first one? How about the second one? Anybody have, this we do every year, I think.
It's just the
Yeah, I, I think we do this all the time.
Yep, disposition of, a lot of the equipment we have is like the, the computer stuff, two thousand and three. I mean, we, we tried to give it away before and people don't want it. So it'll probably end up in the landfill. We will try to give it to people, but they don't want it.
Okay, and the third one? The employee handbook, is this a new document?
Yeah, so the entirety of it is new. The old handbook, well, the old thing was a personnel policy and procedures, I guess. And it's when people were brought on, new, it was, I, I think it was closer to four hundred pages. This is about forty pages. And what we, Mandy and I spent several, well, when we weren't doing other things, we were working through the, each of these sections. And this was all out of order. So this, the original document is based on the cities. The cities, Linda, you might, if you, if you look at the personnel policies, when you open like your mail folder, for example, there'll be personnel policies and it's broken into all these different thousands of pages. And, and ours was based on the city's version. And when we separated from the city, when the Housing Authority came over here, we brought the personnel policies with them. And it, it doesn't make a lot of sense. It was, some of it's good structure and guidance, but it doesn't fit an eight-person staff. It barely probably made sense when we have a twenty-two-person staff. But it certainly doesn't right now. And all the things I highlighted here are some of the key updates. We updated every single piece of this to make it more, every, every line has some touch of what Mandy and I thought were important adjustments to make. But the things I highlighted were, were either key additional things or not existent at all. This introductory, it's same as probation. We, it's just called an introductory period. So just wanted you to know what that was. The, the background, mission statement, our, our work and core values didn't exist when you come on to onboarding to, and then this non-disclosure agreement was important.
I don't want to interrupt your flow, but can you tell us what the basis of this document is? Is this something that peer housing authorities utilize? Or is there, what was the initial form of this one, since it's not the city's?
So I took, I took the, the city's policies, most of the city's structure, and then compared it to about eight other different housing authorities of what they had and what they didn't have. I looked at peer housing authorities that we know that are successful and to see what their newest reiteration, I guess, of a handbook might look like. And took all of that consolidated into different files. And Mandy and I went through each policy line by line and tried to make it fit what made sense to Manhattan based on those examples and based on what Mandy knew and how things kind of worked or didn't work. A lot of the things in our policies didn't line up with how things were actually happening. And some of the things in our policies that existed were needed to be changed so we could actually maybe lean on those in cases where employees were doing things that maybe shouldn't be being done. We just didn't have a policy for that or left a too big of a hole to hold anyone accountable. So.
And I, I don't have anything like concerning about this specifically, but I do need your help in knowing, how can we as a board know that these policies are in accordance with what is required by HUD and our contract, our annual contract? And if there's anything, like, how do we know if anything's in violation of that or, or not? Or what we should put emphasis on other than what you've highlighted?
Yeah, so it's a good question. The, the, uh, both the administrative doc for, that oversee Section Eight and then the, the ACC or the ACOG, those type of documents give large authority to us to create these policies, right? So like, if there's anything, I guess, I can't they, they're not, there's, there's nothing in the, in the seat. Mandy, tell me, if there's nothing that, that can, that narrows it down to this level that says you can or can't do these things. It's so broad that they leave it up to the housing authorities to define how that functions. And I, this has been some of the struggle for me as a new director of why we do things this way, right? Why do we do this? And somebody might say, well, it's because this is what, how we've done it. And, but why did they do it then? And that rabbit hole always ended up going back to, well, HUD doesn't require this, but it's our personnel policies. And our personnel policies were based off the city's policies in nineteen ninety-six. And so I, I guess, um, that, I, I can't tell you that there, every, everything that is in here has either a basis from another housing authority or a reiteration and cleanup from what we had. The, the one place, the workplace lactation policy was, was adopted from, I think, the Texas Housing Authority's version language there that they used because nobody had that. Same, the computer and email usage was a, a reiteration from another, a combination from two different housing authorities.
Good. Um, so I, like I said, I don't have any significant issue with the content of the policy. I just want to make sure that we, we have basis for one, and it sounds like you do. But then also, my next question would be, once we approve this, because we need to have a, a policy we can rely on going forward, is there any limitation to our ability to amend it? I mean, technically, if we sit down and really find tooth comb this and realize there's issues, we could amend it as often as we needed to. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. And, and all of the things that you've amended in the, anything I could find that the board voted on is in here. So everything you've, you've approved is actually in this document where it wasn't in a hard copy accessible to us before. Like we hired somebody new and he said, here's, here's all the new policies. It wasn't that way. So that's, this is kind of a, and one of those examples is the fraternization policy, I think, is one the board adopted. And that, that's in here. And unfortunately, there isn't a lot of those in here because there wasn't a lot of changes. This is more like one big swoop of changing it all. If you want to go back and make changes, you certainly can. And the way that it, I cleaned up the, the structure of it and so that it's in sections. There's employment policy, compensation, you know, you can see the sections there. But the way that it existed previously and the way that it exists for the city and a lot of other housing authorities is in a linear fashion. As HUD says, you need to have maybe a more inclusive definition of this and you need to clean up your personnel policies. That might be an amendment to the end of their books and that, that happened for thirty years. And so it didn't make sense. You're reading about benefits at the end that should be in the part where the, no employee that would read through that in a chrono, would chronological fashion would make any sense or get to the point. So I think this is more designed, so if we hire somebody, they can know and look and see what, what they're expected to what, what their expectations are as a culture, as an environment, what they're going to get as benefits and what they can expect holidays, if they have certain medical leave-type situations. This is easier to find and use document than what we had because I couldn't even really use the document we had to figure out where some of the policies were.
Good. Well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we had acknowledged the basis and everything. So I think, thank you and good work, both of you on this.
There, there, there is another part of this. All right, so this conflict resolution part is important. Let me try to go to that real quick because that involves you and I forgot to highlight it. Like I said, the, the old policy, if there was a problem with an employee, let's say that problem with that employee was with the executive director. And it was a, there, there was no recourse for that employee to be heard. And I don't think that that's how we should run this place. So there is now an employee, there is a way for them to come through and around the executive director to the board to be heard if there is some, some concerns. I'm getting, I'm getting there.
I think it's page thirty-seven. Conflict resolution.
Yeah, so, um, the grievance, there's a grievance policy and structure that ends up, and you might want to look through this when you have time or, that's another thing. If this comes up and you have something happen, you, this document is structured in a way you can go to that page and find out, hey, this is how we're supposed to do it. The other way wasn't. And it gives, gives you the ability for an employee to be heard by the board and to hold the executive director accountable in a way that didn't exist before. I think that just ended with the, it kind of was like a, uh, I don't know, just there was a wall there. And it stopped. If there was a concern, it stopped at the executive director. There was no recourse for the employee.
Let me make sure I'm not on mute. Erin, I had a question. Has, has Craig Olson reviewed these? Just to read through them.
Craig hasn't looked at this one, no. He certainly could. There's, Craig's been spending an awful lot of time with us for FHI and, uh, I mean, we, we could ask him to. I, I don't know that it would be a good use of his time.
I know you don't want to pay him, but.
It might be a little broad to ask him to review our whole policy because It might be a little broad to ask him to review our whole policy because because there's going to, I mean, any attorney is going to review this and find things that they would suggest making changes to. And then we're kind of at a standpoint of what we should do. We might want to go through and pick some of the, maybe ask him if there's some specific areas of concern that he thinks as an attorney would benefit us for him to look at. And maybe some of those being compensation or, you know, some of the high problem areas. And if he has any suggestions there, it might be worth just having him look at specific sections instead of the whole thing. But generally, I don't think, I don't think that it's necessarily required to have an attorney review a policy unless, unless we have concerns about it in, in a big way.
Yeah, and Erin, just as, just out of curiosity, for these new additions, what did you use as a guide to help you write these?
The other, other housing authorities and NARO, the Nan McKay model for, we have access to. It's all of, all of them except, so there is one that has really only the creation of Mandy and I. And that is that cellphone stipend because we're trying to figure out a way to make it. We know our staff use their cellphones, the maintenance use their cellphones. And we don't, we think it could be a lot more cost effective than trying to pay a cellphone bill for somebody to give them maybe a $15 stipend or something. And then have accessibility for them to have, use that cellphone. We're not going to expect them to use their cellphone for all things because we're going to provide iPad and service to do that. But the, the, having everyone have two cellphones was not something everybody wanted and it was going to cost us double. And so we thought that that, if we gave the executive director the latitude to do that with that policy and if the board approved, when we do that, if we get there, that gives us flexibility. But that wasn't based on anything. Everything else was based on other housing authorities or other legal entities that create policy like the Nan McKay. And then again, tweaked to fit our needs.
Okay, I think it's very helpful to know that. Thank you.
It seems to me that a, a policy handbook of any kind is a living document.
Yeah.
You write it, you work with it for a while, you stumble across stuff, you amend it. If, I, I think if it's a good policy document, it is a living document that you will find things that need to be changed when technology changes or something changes, like everybody has to work from home because it's COVID. So it seems to me, from what I've heard and based on the answers to the questions, that some pretty good due diligence has been done on this document. And I certainly, as an employee, would rather have a 40-page document than a thousand-page document. It seems pretty succinct and clear and I think I'm hoping that Erin and Mandy as a team would be open to discussion as things come up with your staff. You, you're having good meetings with your staff. You're developing a good relationship and I'm hoping that you will be willing to listen to, hey, wait a minute, this says exactly this. Shouldn't it be something else? And we could amend it once a year or whenever it was necessary.
Absolutely. I, and I, I think the so much of the policies are, there's probably, and Jamie's good thought there was that a lawyer is going to find a way to add things. They're, they're, they're broad at this point in, in a lot of ways. And that's purposeful to give us the ability to add to them. A lot of these employee documents or personnel policies are created after bad things happen, right? You, you add, you make a policy because, man, we didn't see that happening. We tried to think through how to not let bad things happen, but also not handcuff the process in a way to create efficiency and help people be innovative. But most of the policies are, are in there. It creates a box that people can work within. What was fun to do was talk about the core values and the mission. And so the staff, at our staff meeting, I'll talk about the core values, right? They, they all offered an opportunity of what these, these words mean to them, what the work ethic is for what, what success looks like in an organization, what a role model would be. So that is that is this living with the MHA values. And of course, there will be a requirement that everybody has this and they look through it as they come onboard. But this, this wasn't just the Mandy and Erin document. Everybody chipped in.
Super. All right. Anything else? Can we call a question on the motion to accept these three resolutions?
Sure we can. Chairperson Gallagher.
I say yay.
Vice Chair Olson.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Sheik.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
And Commissioner Clarkson.
Yes.
Okay, looking at the list of new businesses, it seems to me we've talked about the AT&amp;T rooftop lease already. Unless people have another question about that. And the last item would be the Pawnee Mental Health and MHA partnership. And I got to tell you guys, I'm exhausted.
I'll be quick.
Okay.
So we met, we're going to, we're going to send the survey out to all the residents. Pawnee wants to do a six-month pilot partnership where they provide services from our apartment towers likely and maybe utilize one of our studios as a place to provide mental health services to MHA residents and but before we commit to that on, they want to, we're going to, we're going to send out a survey and see how receptive the residents are about receiving mental health services onsite. And if there's enough of an interest, then we'll pursue that further. And that's kind of what that partnership looks like. It'll initially be a survey. So if you hear about that from anyone, that is that is us testing the waters. And I think we have an opportunity to provide a good resource to our, to residents so they don't have to travel. They can get meds or therapy or tele-meds, telehealth right here where they live.
Sounds good. Does anybody have anything else they need to add for the good of the business tonight?
I'd like to note that that's a big deal and I really appreciate you figuring that out. That's huge. So thank you.
Yeah, I think it would be great. It'll be interesting to see if people want to come to the apartment towers and be seen coming in and out. I think there's a, that might be a problem. A privacy kind of thing.
We gotta, we gotta test the waters with the stigma.
Yeah. But that would be wonderful if we could, if we could help, any way we can help. It's a good thing. Okay, guys. I think we're done. So we will see you all on May 6th at 1:00 PM.
Are you, are you dispense, are, are we foregoing the last agenda item about board training? We're tired enough. We want to do that. Just checking.
I feel like we've been trained tonight to the end of my ability to sit anymore.
Is it appropriate to say that's a training that we can self-train if we click that link and go to? So that's more for us to follow up on and, and utilize our own opportunity to learn?
Yes.
I feel like I learned a lot tonight already.
Board training, board training was a HUD item too, so we need to take it really seriously. Thank you. I, I really don't want to do it either.
Erin, could you give us a pop quiz next meeting and, and give us a prize for whoever actually reads the training?
Yes, I think we can arrange that.
That way we have some fun and accountability at the same time. The prize can honestly just be a sticker saying, good job, because that's all I need these days.
Right here.
Just our board member of the month.
There we go. Okay, kids. Thank you. Good job. See you in a week or so.
Thank you. Good work, Mandy and Erin. Appreciate it.
Wonderful.
We know you're working really hard and fast. So thanks for trying to make up for lost time and pushing every day. We, we all appreciate it. We're really.
We certainly do. Yeah, this has been great and I really appreciate the new formats and the details. So thank you very much for making everything really super accessible.
Hey.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.